All right, Cambridge City Council is now in session. Please rise for the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Almighty God, I thank you for your presence here. I thank you for all that are here tonight. I pray that you give us all, um, Lord, peace as we give reports. I pray for wisdom as we make decisions for the city. And, Lord, I just pray your blessing upon this meeting and all that are here today and the families you represent, in Jesus' name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please.
Conaway.
Here.
Ivancho. Loffman.
Here.
McMillan.
Here.
Mauer.
Here.
Wolverton.
Here.
Zaleski.
Here.
Mike.
I make a motion, we excuse Councilman Ivancho.
Kim.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll have a reading in minutes.
I make a motion, we dispense for Ian Benz, place him on file.
You need a second.
Second, Brian.
Second.
Second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, let's move on to the mayor's report.
Little bit more paperwork than I normally do. Good to see everybody, council. Tim's not able to make it, I guess, but he's been in town, meeting with the auditor and different things, mauling around the last couple of weeks. So that's a good thing. On your paper for normal business, I have the following request. One, request from the engineer, A, authorization to advertise for bids and award the North Fifth Street Culvert Project. And B, authorization to advertise for bids and award the lead service line replacement project, Phase Two. Two, on the list, request for approval to enter into contract between the City of Cambridge and the Assmate Local 2316. And three, request from Economic Development to make application for CDBG Flex Grant.
We'll refer those to the Finance Committee.
I have a couple other little things on the side here. You know, with the recent snow and activities and all the different things going on, I just want to think, thank our ground workers, outside workers, sewer, water, parks, cemetery, street department, they did, they truly did a phenomenal job. A lot of times when the school was getting yanked, our schools, our streets were bare and other challenges were out there, but it was a pride thing. And they got it down pretty good, and I appreciate the teamwork there and things that went on around the clock. And then, and the office people battling to get in here, too. Sometimes that's pretty tough. Then I just want to take a minute to say I'm sorry to the families of Chris Gibson Turner and also Bernard Boyd family that own Boyd Glass. Many other people, too, have suffered hardships during that period, but those two names jump off the page a little bit with activities in our city and different things. And I just want to take a moment to say something. On another note, we cut the ribbon on the Guernsey News. If you haven't already got your subscription, I ask that you consider it and call down there and get hooked up for a year's worth of that. It's once a weekly, and it is right on target, local activities going on, advertisements, pictures, what's going on. Just fills that gap that we've, we've had for quite a while. So we'll see where it goes from there, but we want to get our support behind that if we can, so I wanted to mention that. Starting to get a little activity on the pothole side of things, that just goes with the flow, literally, water flow, freezing and thawing, we're going to have some breaks. We're working, the guys are working hard, in fact, phenomenal of what they've been doing out there. And the guys are moving on the potholes and the mixes is coming in, and, and that's ongoing. You're welcome to call the street department or my office, get on the list, we're going to get there. Might not be in the first hour, but we'll try to make it happen. So council president, if that's all on the regular stuff, I would like to go into the annual reports.
Okay, anybody have any questions for the mayor? Yes, sir.
Okay, well, then it's just that time of the year where, um, this is the year where the staff comes in, and they're all behind me right now, and I know they're fully excited about being here. And, um, it's the 2024 year-end reports. And, um, they're going to come up here and give a short overview of things, and I think my understanding is you've received a copy online. And there's just quite a bit, when you look back over the year, it's incredible, some of the things that's taken place. And we just keep powering on and don't spend a whole lot of time to get to think about it. So first up, in the safety departments, we're going to go public safety, and that'll be Mark Baker.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Evening. Good evening, Mark.
Well, I'm not going to read this report for you, because I know Sharon's got the timer running. This is my first year as safety director, my first report, too, and it's, it's been interesting here for me. All the years I worked for the city, I thought I knew what went on in the city, and I found out I have no clue. Learned something new about the city almost every day. But some of the highlights, we finally got the elevator up and running. We ended up putting a roof on the Ellis Building. We've had multiple repairs everywhere. I would say public lands is the bane of this job. The police department, we set a goal when Chief Peoples was appointed at the beginning of the year. We hired nine officers, and he's up to staff. So they're up and good. Fire Department EMS is up and running good, they're busy, but both squads running all the time. I know that they're, that they're tired. They run all the time. Kim is extremely busy with code enforcement. I've had the opportunity to go out several times with her on different things, and, yeah, she's busier than I ever thought she was. As I said, I learn something new every day. But you guys have my report, I just want to thank you for everything that council provides for us and the opportunity to serve.
Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome. Any questions?
You're all being timely, you did good.
Next up, we have Dave Duhamel, Assistant Chief, representing Chief Deeks, who could not be here tonight, and we wish him the best.
Good evening, council. First thing I guess we need to bring up, of course, is we started a new journey at the fire department here in August. Actually running the ambulance, and believe it or not, I personally feel that it's went amazingly well. There's been a few little stumblings, but nothing major. They've, so far, just last year, they did 2,700 runs, that was including just the first responders prior to that. We have a couple paramedics already on staff. We have two more that's in school at this moment, a third that's going to be starting here apparently next month. So that seems to be working well. Their department's trying to set it up to where we're doing our own in-house continuing ed through the state so that we can keep our hours up without having to go outside of the department. We ought to be able to take care of the majority of what we need in-house, is what our main goal is at this point. The next thing he's got written down here, I'm following Chief Deeks here just a little bit, because there was a couple of things he asked me to highlight, and also that we'd had some promotions done within the department when Chief Milner left, or Assistant Chief Milner left. And then there will be three more positions opened up when I leave here in April. So other than that, that's all I can give you offhand. Of course, you already have a copy of this, so I'm just briefly going across it.
Thank you, Dave. Anybody have any questions? Thanks, Dave.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next up, we have code, I'm okay to do it from here. About code enforcement, that'd be Kim Conrad.
Good evening, um, like everybody else, I'll just hit a couple highlights. I am owed 465 times this year at a cost of $20,000. We collected about 28,000 in liens this year, which was up a little bit from last year, but not our highest. It kind of goes up and down. The spring cleanup and fall cleanup again, um, went well. The other communities joined us again. We had one scrap tire, uh, tire trailer full, some scrap, and 95 tons for the spring cleanup, only 11 tons for the fall cleanup. So we need to find a way to maybe up that a little bit or consider a different kind of project for that. Dealt with about three fires throughout the year, a couple of garage demos, three other demos that I did within my office, not related to the land banks demolitions. This year, with the dog protective services and children's services, something different, we kind of worked on cleaning out a couple houses. We did joint efforts, they were all hoarding situations, and I think there were three of those that we did. Two for elderly, one had kids involved. We towed again with the police this year, we tagged over 105 vehicles, we towed more than 30% of those. Still attend the eviction cases most times. And then, when contacted by either the PD, the fire department, APS, CPS, I go out sometimes. We condemn, it's not condemn, but mark a property uninhabitable, unsafe for the time being until it can be cleaned up and the people are moved to another location. Still take care of the vacant property and rental registrations, deal with the insurance on the fires, and, um, treasurer still of the land bank. One thing different this year, your clerk signed me up to be a speaker at Ohio Municipal League this year.
And she did a fabulous job.
She did do a fabulous job. Provided a session. And since then, actually, three different communities, mayor and safety and service directors from there have contacted me, and they're kind of like using our boilerplate on vacant property registrations and one on rental registration. So that was, that was kind of cool, something different. So that was it. Like Mark said, we're busy, but, you know, it's a job, so.
Thank you, Kim. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Kim.
You won't have to wipe the front of the chair to fix the moors, but I will say, this department, we extend to every department within the city. There's always, it's ongoing, changing, all the time, and she makes those adjustments every single day. And it takes all of us, safety director, service director, myself, and the police department's coming full circle on to Chief Peoples to support that, because honestly, the world we're living in is just a little bit crazier out there. And it hasn't completely saturated in our area, but at the same time, things have to be dealt with, testing the children involved, elderly. Appreciate that, Kim. Okay, next up, we have Economic Community Development, Ryan Noll.
Howdy. How's everyone doing?
Good.
Great. Okay, I'll keep it short and sweet. Want to hear your collect call? Okay, so our department, Economic and Community Development, okay, we go after grants. Okay, for 2024, we didn't do too bad. For one, we finished up the 2021 chip grant, uh, which we were awarded $700,000 for. Spent nearly all of it. Can't give you the penny amount right now, but, uh, we're really, really close to spending it all. Onto the next thing, 2024 chip grant, we received that, that's another 700,000. That helped the residents of Guernsey County and the city of Cambridge, all in all, that's a win. 2024 allocation grant, we submitted on behalf of the Guernsey County Commissioners, and we were awarded 210,000 to, um, resurface, uh, a few of the roads in Buffalo. So that helps those folks out. Next one, building demolition site revitalization grant. We submitted, uh, for 500,000, well, actually more than that, but we did receive 500. Okay, so that's, that's another thing. So we'll see more properties being demolished that are a blight to the community. We've got the Lead Safe Ohio Grant, uh, so far, we received $530,000 for, for that one. And that's, uh, for lead abatement, lead remediation projects within the city and county. Next one, uh, we work alongside the Health Department with EPA HSTS Grant. We're awarded 150,000, and we just submitted for another one this past year, and we're expected to receive that, uh, well, here in February, most likely. And also, I'd like to bring up Fair Housing, just that Melissa Swingle, uh, she is the new Fair Housing Coordinator. She, uh, assumed that role in 2024. And, uh, Evelyn King, she, she retired officially at the end of, uh, last year. And, uh, well, year before, I'm sorry. And I just, uh, also want to throw in there that we have a new employee, Trevor McQuain. He assumed, uh, inspector role and within our department. So if you guys have any questions about demolitions, lead, and/or, uh, construction questions, come see him. Jody Sarkwitz, she, uh, retired at the end of 2024, so, um, that's, that's all I've got.
Thank you, Brandon. Anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Brandon.
You're welcome.
Been working on a couple of employees there, he had his hands full there for a while, and he worked very hard to get that worked out. Self-supervised that area, and then real fortunate. The land bank with the county is a partnership, it's huge, he helps get involved with Kim Conrad, the administration team. That's been a godsend, Guernsey County, Cambridge, getting in 500,000 or less to work on some of these houses. And we're waiting on this next, hopefully this next season comes up. Next up, in the safety area, we've got Chief Peoples.
What a year. As you see in my report, we acquired some equipment, we got a drone through a partnership with the schools. We now have an attack cat car, as it's been named, if you haven't seen it, it's, it's pretty neat. But all that is useless if we don't have personnel. And we did it. We hired nine officers. First, I want to thank the officers that have been here a while, who stuck through us the last couple of years and exercised the patience that I asked them to have, so we could get to this point. I want to thank the six officers, uh, fresh out of the academy, who chose to start their career with Cambridge. They chose, we sent four, we recruited four. Another young lady decided to, uh, come from newcomers town down from here, little bit more opportunities, better equipment, things like that. And then two officers who ultimately decided that, uh, maybe I should come back to Cambridge, because it's a good place to work. So with that, just a big thank to everybody. Thank you to council for having the patience. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for having faith in me. Thank you, Director Baker. It was, it's, it's, for me personally, it's really easy to work for Mark, because I've done it for 30 years. I know exactly, well, almost always know how he thinks and what he's going to say, uh, which is a blessing, but he's been, he's been nothing but, uh, good for us. So that's all I have to say. If you have any questions.
Thank you, chief. No questions? All good? Thank you, chief.
He hit the head on the head, swearing in all, got the place working on them, too, here, pretty good. He does some work here, so, good job, chief. Okay, in the service department, so first up, we're going to go with engineer, Nick Cunningham, I think I have a pretty good one.
We got bats going up here.
First and foremost, how about those Buckeyes? Can I get an OH?
Hi, Zach.
Thanks for Caleb Downs, he was a beast.
My cat, by the way.
Thank you, thank you. You know, a lot of things get marked down, this was marked up. It was marked $40, I paid 56, I don't know how that happened, but I would have paid 156. All right, thanks, uh, for, uh, giving us the opportunity to do this. The engineering department had another pretty, um, busy year. We didn't do a whole lot of capital improvement projects, although the sum of projects we did was pretty large, but, uh, we really set ourselves up for the next couple of years. I have the projects here, I won't go over them, um, if you have any questions, I'll certainly answer them. Capital Improvement Design, we had several projects under design, like I said, setting us up. The raw waterline project is a big one, we did get a grant for that, 250,000 from ODOD. So, um, you can see the contract was just about 460,000, but we did get a grant for that. We got the safer house of school project on the north side of Clermont, uh, that design is done, and actually, that project has been awarded. So that'll probably start off around May, uh, SNF Construction Services got that for almost $400,000. And we got a $500,000 grant, so we're going to see if we can get some, uh, additional work done and some inspection there as well. North Fifth Street Culvert Project, that should begin around July 1st, that design is done. We did get a $200,000 grant from OPWC, and also, we're going to get a loan out for that project. Let's see, any other one? The Trailhead, that design should be done, uh, by about spring. It's getting held up a little bit right now by the railroad, which I guess isn't a terrible thing, because we are seeking additional funding. If anyone was here, uh, before this meeting, I actually went over the gazebo and Hopalong Cassidy Walkway, and we've also submitted a safety grant for almost $900,000 for some traffic signals. So, uh, working with the railroad and also securing additional funding for that. Fire station renovation project, that design's done, and we're actually opening bids for it tomorrow. So look for that project to start later this year. As far as, uh, grants received, I have a list there. I think McVicker probably went over in pretty good detail last Tuesday. We're planning to pave Edgeworth Edition this year, but not Edgeworth Avenue, as we did get a $1.6 million grant, small city to do Edgeworth Avenue, uh, East Street Road, and also Will's Creek Valley Drive. So look for that the following year, if not that, the following year after that. Right now, ODOT has a program for 2027, but we are trying to, uh, expedite that. And another grant on here, I guess I'd point out, is the 1.5 million congressional grant. That budget has not been passed, there is grumbling that, that may not go through, but we did get, um, notice that we were going to get it, but of course, the federal budget hasn't passed, so anything could happen. The staff, I won't mention the, the guys you already know, but we were able to hire a couple people this year. Cody Confury is our project inspector, he's doing a fantastic job. We have him doing several other things, uh, you know, his primary goal has been this year inspecting the Edgeworth Edition Waterline Project, which is about a $3.7 million project. So that keeps him pretty busy, but he also got all of our ODOT pre-qualifications, which was huge, because I wasn't able to carve out the time this year to get those done, but we're still in good shape. He got them done, he did the sewer inspection on McFarland, and we also added, uh, Justin Shaver to the team. He does our utility court, um, locates, and also, he's our GIS specialist. He's doing an amazing job, I also have him working on our striping plan, our signing plan, and he's our backup inspector, uh, covering Cody. So those were two great additions, and we certainly appreciate you guys allowing us to get those additional personnel. Any questions?
Nick, you mentioned the paving of Edgeworth Edition, um, where are you as far as completion of the project, waterline project and all that good stuff out there?
We're about 70% done with the, the project overall. They're probably about a month and a half out from getting away from the Edgeworth Edition. We do have two manholes that we're going to install up there, one on 10th and St. Louis, and another one on 12th and Edgeworth. So we're going to change order of those in. It looks like we're going to have some additional funding, and we're likely going to do, uh, Dunning Lane. Uh, that, that road there has a lot of water breaks, um, matter of fact, the city is getting, we're getting beat up with water breaks. We already have 24 this year, uh, two today. So if we keep up this pace, we'll have over 320 on the year, so. But January notoriously is, is a month that you have a lot of breaks, but we had 139 last year, which is, well, it's a record since I've been here, but I, I know they've had more breaks in the past before we started lowering pressure. But I won't go into those details, if you want those details, you can come see me at any time. Any other questions?
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Nick.
I just wanted to hit one thing here, I think is critical. He, um, he mentioned it, but I'm going to give it, 13 million dollars was outside grant money. I mean, that is truthfully historic, no one has ever done that here. And to referee that, and me and the service director, we sit down with Nick every week on his own meeting, and the man never stops. And having a city engineer and you guys provide the opportunity, and we have that, is huge. And Nick's doing a wonderful job, and, um, I just, just want to highlight the fact that what's coming in here is like a tidal wave, we're going to really be busy the next few years.
So next up, the Department of Public, Tim Gibson.
No, you're doing good, I'm proud of you.
Good evening. Kind of the same thing, you guys got my report and everything already, but I'll try to hit some highlights and keep it short. We did take over ownership of, um, Cambridge City Schools, the old bus garage, which was a blessing. We've currently worked to try to move some equipment and everything over there, cleaning up the compound at the, the bus garage. Another big thing was, um, we worked with Law Director Bill Ferguson and got the 501(c)(E) Partners of the Park completed. Got some donations and everything starting to roll in, we got the organization functioning, it, it's up and running. We got a good group, um, with, uh, a, a lot of good local people that will help. They're, they're young and enthusiastic, we, we do have some older ones, but, uh, they're going to really work on that to, to get that going. Most of you know, too, that we work with, uh, uh, the mayor worked on this a, a good bit, but we got a 50-foot flagpole from the Guernsey County Disabled Veterans, uh, down on, uh, North Avenue. Had that installed, and Centerfield out at Don Coss Stadium, along with, uh, some new signs out there that council, a couple council members and people brought up, um, to rename and have a proclamation ceremony for Ron Anle, to name that. So that all kind of coordinated together, which was really, really great, uh, looks awesome out there. We also, of course, hosted the annual Easter egg hunt, Boomerama, of course, which was another excellent show, and Breakfast with Santa was another big hit, too, which goes with everything. We were told, too, that Governor Dewine had passed a, a new bill, signed a new bill, which has come in effect in January 25, where AEDs need to be placed through, uh, public facilities. We've, uh, recently, the AEDs came in, we're trying to work with Steve Helton to get trained, set up the training to have those installed and, and placed for when weather breaks, when it gets ready to go. Also, at the end of the pool season, was really good, um, we did have a pump go down and a control panel that has been fixed for our slides, so it'll be up and running. We also had masonry work that was done by Martin Poole from Columbus. It's, uh, been grinded down, taken care of, we're just waiting for them, when the weather breaks, spring, they'll come down and paint that pool. Should be up and running and ready to go for that. Another thing that really took place that was, was good is, uh, working with the Guernsey vets again. They came up and donated a 25-foot flagpole for the Forest Ward, um, green space at Fourth and Wall. We recently had that new concrete sidewalks put in, um, kind of like Clark and Beatty, and actually, they put it in an insert, so we can put that pole in as soon as the weather breaks, too, there. Some really good things going through the park. And then, one thing also in the fall was we work with, uh, Guernsey County National Road Historical Center. They had found the mile marker and wanted to place it in the park, we put that in out there and had a ceremony. Looks great, kind of neat, you can drive through and see it, but, uh, that was a big thing. It's right by the entryway of the Arts and Crafts Festival. Channel 9 or Wiz was over here, I still call it Channel 9, but of course, it's Channel 5 now or something. And then, another thing was, uh, we had a little bit of extra money, um, left over, because the boiler still has not come in, so we're working on, we got some windows replaced in the basement of the armory that have, uh, recently just kind of rotted out. And also with that, we, uh, yeah, had the sidewalk put in down, down there at, uh, Fourth and Wall, and wanted to let everybody know that we did bring back the Iron Family Basketball, um, which was a big thing, it will help our community. Both basketball programs have lacked it, it's been gone for seven years. The mayor was adamant, we, we've got it going, Steve, Iron's back, and we actually, yesterday, Jim Iron come down. We got a group pitcher, we'd like to place that in the armory. Jim is 97, soon to be 98 years old in three months, so it was just a, kind of a monumental moment. So, but, uh, appreciated everything, any questions?
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Of course, you know how the park feels for our community, it's off the charts. One thing you might have to admit is memorial trees, we've planted a ton of trees both there, at the cemetery and around town. And you're going to start seeing, about after two years, you see the blooming, uh, in the, in the fall. You go through the park there, what more is there to do? You go through the park there, what more is there to do? We have a Christmas tree program. It's hard to run this year because of the drought, but there's just a lot of things. And of course, if Melanie know about that, we'll be on the front four next year. We just got to keep buying. We do need that handicap bathroom and trying to raise money and move things around. Okay, next up, we have Public Service and Street on my end.
Last one went over, so you're cut short.
Yeah, I checked with Sharon earlier. The last time I went to like three twenty-four, so I got like thirty-six seconds to do it this year. She got my time off from the last time. I submitted a report. After twenty-five years down there, we do what we do. We do it the best we can with the money we have and the guys we have. Really good group of guys. Snow removal, they really shine. Leaf pickup, they shine. Potholes take longer. Just is what it is. If you have any questions, if you want to come down and visit, go through our process, do what we do. We're welcome to come down. Was going to do a short report on service director, but that started out January third, waking up in the hospital in pain. My knee surgery went fine. There was no pain there. I had a visitor. I haven't been able to shake him all year, and my time's up. Any questions?
Any questions, Phil?
Give me a call if you need it.
Yeah, thank you, Tom.
You know, when you do this job, I will tell you, you want to do it with good video. And all these people get the bar high. But I do wear that guy out. Of course, he wears me out too, going.
Paybacks.
Yeah. Coming into this thing, I do it one way or the other. When it comes to streets, we have to move on. Okay, next up, it's always entertaining.
First of all, I'd like to thank the staff. Works with me every day, Tom and and Bill and JJ. And also, we have Beck Cheese Art that's part-time in the office, a seasonal worker. And all the seasonal workers, they're the ones out there trimming around them thirty, forty thousand stones. It's, it wouldn't look as good if it wasn't for them guys. And thank you, Mayor, for letting us, you know, have seasonal workers. Four hundred and nineteen hours of overtime. We had one hundred in tournaments. Forty-seven of those was cremation. So if I do my math right, that's forty-seven percent of all funerals or cremations. So that's pretty easy there. Forty-eight foundations. Our office received one thousand two hundred and two calls. We had seven hundred and ninety, ninety-two people stop in the office, one thousand one hundred and fifty-six emails during the same period. I'm not going to go through the revenue because you have a new report. I tried to attend two Veterans Commission meetings each year. Twenty trees was planted through the Tree Committee and two was memorial trees. So we had total twenty-three, twenty-two trees planted. We put in new section posts, seventy-five of them with sections with the numbers. We did the cemetery renewal of the ordinances, which was a lot of work in that. Expansion of the cemetery started with the groundwork. Keep on going on that. Just a little note here, out of the mausoleum, the crypts on the inside, we have forty-four of those left, and on the outside, we only have thirty-nine. So it's getting, it's getting down there. And the same thing on the octagon for the niches. We've, we got forty-one of those left out of the seventy-two, which has only been there for five years. So that's what it's going to. It's cremations is what we're going to. None of that. Thank you. That's all I have.
Any questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Gray.
All right, thank you.
In the area of the cemetery, it's just, it's a very sacred place for our people. Be able to expand that a little bit and have a little area down. I'm going projects. Purchased the building with your permission a couple of years back on the fire park. We've been able to make some key moves in almost all departments over the last couple of years. And James, with his veteran attitude of knowing what's going on, we've moved another foreman out there to help him to someday take over as our hope. And it's kind of a floating process, and all things are good. But again, without that leadership, I don't, it'd be very tough to do that. And the city really appreciates that. The walkers is off the charts out there. And the rule changes you promoted a couple of, that is going good so far, I'm telling you. Okay, so next up, you got Deb McKinnon, the utilities office.
He doesn't seem real confident about that.
I do. I'd like to start off by recognizing my staff. If it wasn't for them, I wouldn't have a good department. Randy Zook Black, the serviceman. He has twenty-nine years of service. Tim Ward, the bill clerk, twenty-five years. Tiara Carston with two years. And I have two recently new workers in my department, Randy Dagan and Dave Whittle. Randy has ten years of service and Dave has a little over two years. Randy and Dave are meter readers and both are doing training with Zook on service man duties as Zook is scheduled to retire in June. Some points of interest in the utilities offices. We currently serve approximately fifty-seven hundred business and residential accounts. We separate the city, some of you may already know this, but I thought just some of the new ones. We separate the city into three zones for billing purposes. Each zone is billed every three months. Residential customers receive four bills per year while the commercial receives billed monthly. The third Wednesday of each month is designated as shut-off day for a particular zone for those accounts not paying their water bill. This includes a fifteen-day grace period for non-payment after the due date. Our average shut-off day begins with about a hundred accounts on Wednesday morning. After working the list, talking with customers door-to-door and on the phone, collecting last minute payments, we end up with about ten or so that get actually shut off. We do our best to resolve these situations with each customer. Our average monthly collection in our office is a little over eight hundred thousand dollars. We strive to continue the quality service the public expects from each of us. I would expect, or feel free to each of you, stop by anytime if you have any questions or concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
When I first took the office, it was not unusual to get at least one call a day in that area. And I didn't know. I mean, nothing's ever perfect. But she, her staff and her were very hard on customer service, and I truly appreciate that because it's a struggle. There's a real struggle that goes with that. And we make sure that they work for us, we work for them. That's how we and her have to go. I appreciate that.
And I'll break the rule here, Tom, and add some tidbits to. Debbie also heads up our Records Commission Committee that requires each department to have a records retention program. And she schedules all of the shredding for us. And she also assists, I know, with the Treasurers Office and the Auditors Office. And she's got a great math mind, and so she's never afraid to help those departments. And that undertaking of getting all the, all the stuff shredded that meets the law is a big job. And she does that just like it's second nature.
Saying that is completely true because that wasn't always the way, but she took it on.
Right.
On that note, I want to say specifically, that lady works behind the shadows in support of the administration. Make sure the book files, things are there. If there's ever something that's a little bit hard to figure out, she ain't stopping until it's done. So sometimes that's, sometimes it doesn't even feel like a problem. Okay, next up, environmental water. And that word environmental, don't ever, that is so huge going forward. Sewer, water, I do look for it.
Well, good evening, everybody. I know you're just bright-eyed and bushy-tailed after everybody's talked to you. Listen, I just want to cover a couple of things environmentally, one of which was, and this goes hands-in-hand with Nick. We recently hired, or we hired a GIS kind of coordinator locator person. On the stormwater side, it's been instrumental. We have certain requirements by the EPA that requires us to know where our system is. We've had certain issues in the past where we didn't know where everything was, and we didn't recognize that that's what they were. And they've steered us in the right direction. They're so kind. So again, with the GIS coordinator locator person, he actually can on the fly go out and locate things. And with me in the office, he can change things in real time as to what's out there in the field. And I can actually see it happen on my computer inside, which is huge. It also gives us and Nick's group in the engineering department a better feel for it. And geographically, as well as with his drawings and all the information he has to put together for for design, it's crucial that he does those things as well as he can. And it allows us to do that less expensively than it would be if we had to hire it out. So he's been a real, real bonus to us. One of the other things we've done also is, you know, we worked with the Guernsey Soil and Water and the OSU Extension on preparing and completing a seminar for soil erosion and things like that. That goes hand-in-hand with our permit. One of the other things that we're required to do with our permit also is, and you may have heard them, the wasted oil and the pet waste in the drains. I don't know if you've heard them on the radio, but we run twenty to thirty of those things every year. So you might hear them on the radio periodically. And we are required to do that. One of the other things, I guess one of the things too that is really crucial last year for us was in two thousand and four, we were, we entered into what's called a consent agreement with the US EPA and the Ohio EPA for our misdealings with wastewater. And that's, that's been ongoing since two thousand and four. Twenty years later is when we got out of it last year. We are no longer under consent orders with US EPA or the Ohio EPA. So we fulfilled those obligations because of Chris and because of engineering and because of all the people behind the scenes and the people that are doing the job are doing it right. We've been inspected constantly. And so I have to give them kudos. They did a great job over the years. One of the things also I like to try to do is I like to try to get the plant operator, the chief operator or the superintendent here to give you their two cents worth for each one of their departments. Due to some family obligations, Brian Starr, who is our chief operator now at the water plant, was unable to make it tonight. So I'm your, your go-to here. So I'm going to read some things that he has given to me. But also, I know he gave you a list of some of the projects that he has completed last year. But so he asked me to step in and give you a brief rundown of twenty twenty-four. The plant produced over a billion gallons of drinking water last year. Actually, one point two two seven billion gallons of water last year, which is a slight increase over twenty twenty-three, but not a whole lot. One of the things, it was like a half percent more, which is interesting because our chemical bills went up six percent to three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars is what we spent last year on, on chemicals to treat the one point two billion dollars or gallons of water. One of the other things that is killing, is increasing those costs too is EPA requirements. We went from having to sample water six hundred and twenty-two times in twenty twenty-three to nine hundred and sixty-eight times last year. So we're seeing a significant amount of increase there. Piggybacking on what Nick said as well is we had a hundred and thirty-nine breaks this year. The year before, we had eighty-five. So I wonder if that's not the dry weather that probably caused a lot of that. But so let's see here. May, a lot of you may have seen the clearing that has been going on. These are some of the projects that you most, most likely would be able to see. We had a lot of clearing of the right-ofways, sewer and water. We had some more clearing done at the Highland Tanks. They had it all cleaned up. They also put fencing around those that require it. Another big thing that you may have seen is out at the reservoir. They cleaned up, ODNR required, you know, a lot of trees on the dam, the dam or in those areas that might influence its integrity. So we had that cleaned up as well. There's a bunch of other things that were done. Cementation basins, chlorine building was worked on. High-service pumps were replaced. And that's pretty much it in a nutshell. One of the other things I wanted to say though is the, the guys out there working, the guys that are out there in the, in the field, the sewer guys, the water guys, it's ten below zero. You guys got a water break. They don't wait for the water temperature or the air temperature to come up. They're there. They're working in it. They're getting wet. It's ten degrees below zero, and they're still at it. Like Nick said, we had twenty-two breaks in January. It's been one of the worst, coldest Januas I can remember here. It has been. Snow's been on the ground forever. And so, you know, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank those guys. Not only those guys individually, but also their families for putting up with the overtime that they put in. It's significant. It costs the city and residents a lot of money to keep water in the pipes and to keep sewer in the pipes. So really, they, they, they get some really kudos. They did a fantastic job in seventy, twenty twenty-four. So with that, I want to induce Chris Jamel. If there's no other questions, I want to induce Chris Jamel to take care of the sewer.
Okay. Thank you, Lou.
Thanks.
Thanks, Lou.
Thanks, Lou.
Good evening.
Evening.
Just to piggyback off what Lou talked about a couple of years ago, I was in front of you talking to you about that. Sorry.
That's okay.
Couple of years ago, I was in front of you guys talking about the consent decree order we were under and how close we were getting under it, out from underneath it and how big it is to get out from underneath that. And I'm really happy that we are. And that's, that's due to the law, the work of the staff at the wastewater plant and the collections crew. And we got a new foreman there, Dallas Green. So he's taking over that spot. There hasn't been any issues on the pretreatment side of things, which we also oversee. We've been doing that since nineteen eighty-five. Being all that said, our plant is still aging. So we are looking at capital improvement projects to help fix some of our aging equipment like skate, electrical, equipment like that. It'll be, it's not going to be cheap, but it has to be done or someday we're going to be in trouble with EPA again. So we don't want that. If you have, if you take a look at my year and report, all the particulars are in there as far as all the numbers and everything. I even included, well, we seem to forget because it was such a hot, dry summer. It was actually a pretty wet early, late winter, early spring. And the plant was about fifty percent underwater in April. So I gave, I put some pictures in there so you guys could see that. But we didn't lose treatment. We kept on flowing and took care of business even though that was going on. That's all I have. You guys have any questions?
Any questions?
Thanks, Chris. Thanks, Chris.
Okay, next up, Honored Hunter Johnson, I'll be here tonight. His report is submitted. Family got involved there a little bit. Job, glad to work with him. Bill Ferguson submitted his report and had some things going on. Couldn't make it either. So next up, Treasurer Mike Secors here tonight.
Hello.
Hi, Mike.
Well, everyone gets their monthly reports, like may have not have been done in the past. Sharon, thank you for distributing those on a timely basis. Tax revenues were up slightly, one point seven percent, and our workload has increased two point five percent. The law director and the core system has helped us collect a hundred and sixty-one thousand in delinquent taxes. Terra Church, Brandy Hinkle, Sumacino, they attend conferences and meetings regularly. Many of those are in central Ohio. And so they've expanded their network of relationships with other municipal tax professionals that have certainly helped us. And that's very clear. We can see that in the revenues. So with what they've done, that's allowed me to spend a little, some more time with what the investments are. We have over eight hundred thousand dollars in interest revenue collected. And with cash investments of over twenty-seven million dollars, we balance the treasurer's bank balance to what the auditor has every month. And thank you, Debbie. If I'm off a penny or thirty cents, a second set of eyes goes a long way in helping me find that. That's it.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, Council President, in closing. First of all, everybody, thank you. Beautiful job. The details in the paperwork, but without question, and I'm just going to take a minute to brag a little bit. The state of the city currently is solid, and I'm proud of it. And I'm proud of the people we have working here. I'm proud of the council. I'm proud, we've got a, we've got a couple of changes. Things keep moving. We feel we find a way to make it work. We've got some challenges coming up. got some challenges coming up. We still got a couple of contracts to negotiate, get figured out. That's been going pretty good, but everybody has a different opinion sometimes. That's just part of it. And, you know, you kind of hedge the bets a little bit to keep all departments moving. We now have nineteen of those. And it's just not very often, you know, what you don't see in here is Kelly, my assistant, just absolutely gets it coming from all different sides. So it's just a good group. Glad to have, and you guys enabled us to get what we need. So. Any questions, council president, or any councilman?
Any questions for that, buddy? Thank you, Mayor, for you and your team.
It's time for two thousand and twenty-five.
Yes, sir. Thank you. All right. Okay, with that, we'll move on here tonight. We don't have anything with the city attorney this evening, and we'll move on to communications.
The first one I have is from Grace Pantry. They are asking permission to conduct a boot drive to collect both monetary and staple donations. And they want to do this in May, but they know that sometimes the process takes longer, so they wanted to get it in now.
Motion to refer to city services?
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, ayes have it.
I have a request from Turbo Excavating that is asking council to consider a rezone of the property at twenty-eighty-eight North Avenue. That's the old glass plant school. And this, Mr. President, should go to committee as a whole.
I'll refer that as committee as a whole.
You need a motion for that.
I need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
All right. Steve?
Second motion.
Second. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, ayes have it.
And I have monthly reports from the park board, auditor, treasurer. Yes, that's it.
All right. Tommy?
Motion to accept and place on file.
Brian?
Second.
All right, thank you. Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same side, ayes have it. All right. How about unfinished business? Nothing for unfinished business. Committee reports?
Report of Finance Committee, January the twenty-first, we recommend that council authorize the administration to enter into design contract for the two thousand and twenty-seven St. Frost School project.
Any questions on that? No?
Report of Finance Committee, January the twenty-first, we recommend that council authorize the administration to advertise for bids and enter into contract for the two thousand and twenty-five continuous street improvement project.
All right, any questions on that?
Report of Finance Committee, January the twenty-first, we recommend that council amend fees for the EMS billing.
Okay, any questions on that?
Report of Finance Committee, January the twenty-first, we recommend that the following transfers and appropriations be approved. Appropriate one thousand five hundred and sixty dollars and seventy-four cents to police electronics technology. Transfer twenty-seven thousand three hundred dollars from police retirement to police vehicles. Transfer two thousand seven hundred dollars from police retirement to police electronics technology. Transfer five thousand dollars from sewer improvements over five thousand dollars to sewer improvements under five thousand dollars. Transfer two thousand five hundred dollars from water improvements over five thousand dollars to water improvements under five thousand dollars.
Any questions on that report? Okay. All right. I already asked about unfinished business. If we can do that again, no unfinished business. Okay. And I don't think we, anybody left in the audience that would like to come forward and speak tonight? I think we pretty well covered everybody out there. Anybody left? All right. And I think we can move on to new business. Anything on new business? New business? All right. Then we're gonna move on to ordinances and resolutions.
An ordinance authorizing the administration to enter into design contract for the two thousand and twenty-seven Safe Routes to School project.
Tommy?
Motion to suspend.
Kim?
Second to motion.
All those in favor, second? Roll call, roll call. Let's get that right.
Mauer?
Yes.
Zaleski?
Yes.
Conaway?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Kim?
Motion to pass.
Steve?
Second to motion.
Any discussion on that? No? All right. Roll call.
Zaleski?
You'll get it.
Zaleski?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Mauer?
Yes.
Loftman?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Conaway?
Yes.
All right. That motion is adopted.
An ordinance authorizing the administration to advertise for bids and enter into contract for the two thousand and twenty-five continuous street improvement project.
Johnny?
Motion to suspend?
Mike?
Second then.
Roll call.
Conaway?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Loftman?
Yes.
Mauer?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Brian?
Motion to pass.
Second motion.
Discussion? No discussion? There's a lot to do here.
Roll call?
And a roll call.
Zaleski?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Mauer?
Yes.
Loftman?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Conaway?
Yes.
To be fair, his first meeting, we had no legislation.
That's right. Cover for me, Sharon. Keep up the good work.
An ordinance amending fees for EMS billing.
All right, let's go. Mike?
Motion to suspend.
Steve?
Second to motion.
Roll call.
Mauer?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Zaleski?
Yes.
Conaway?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Kim?
Motion to pass.
Brian?
Second to pass.
Any discussion? We're catching on here. All right.
Loftman?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Conaway?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Zaleski?
Yes.
Mauer?
Yes.
That motion is adopted.
An ordinance of transfers and appropriations.
Johnny?
Motion to suspend?
Mike?
Second then.
Roll call?
McMillan?
Yes.
Conaway?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Mauer?
Yes.
Loftman?
Yes. Motion to pass.
All right. I'll get you a second.
Okay.
Okay, second, and any discussion?
I just want to, I wasn't able to be at finance last meeting. Am I out?
Yep.
And I just want to thank Chief Peoples for working with Mr. Evanco and everything to try to arrive at a different solution for your predicament, for lack of a better term, at this point in time, at the first of the year, you know, that we can work on that. And I thank you for being so cooperative and, and working on that.
Roll call?
Zaleski?
Yes.
Loftman?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Conaway?
Yes.
Mauer?
Yes.
All right. I think we're ready to move on to miscellaneous.
Finance committee will meet next Monday, February third, at four thirty PM here in council chambers.
And city services will meet at four forty-five or thereafter. Finance?
And committee as a whole will meet at five o'clock or shortly after. And anybody else have anything on miscellaneous they'd like to add tonight? Pretty quiet now. All right. Johnny?
I make my sure adjourned.
Right.
Johnny.
We're adjourned.
Johnny got new glasses.
Well?
He did?